Good evening, everyone. Like to call to order the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for December 5th, 2022. Look to staff now to please call the roll. Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Commissioner Lopez?
Here.
Commissioner Wildermouth?
Here.
And Chairman Cox?
Present.
We have four of you.
Excellent. Speaking of which, thank you for the four of you, three of you, four of us, right, to be here tonight. So appreciate you being here. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the meeting minutes from the November 7th, 2022 session of our commission meeting. Is there any discussion? If not, the chair will entertain a motion for the approval of those minutes.
I move to approve.
I'll second.
Staff, please call the roll.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Wildermouth?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
And Chairman Cox?
Yes.
The minutes are approved, four to zero.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is the chairman's opening statement. So it's my opportunity to welcome all of you here tonight, my fellow commissioners, staff here in the front and in the back, those of you watching remotely, now or in the future. I was thinking about my opening statement for this meeting, and it, of course, focuses on the welcome, which I just extended to all of you, but also to the time of year we're in. And for me, it's hard to believe we're in December already. Having said that, though, I would say this commission had a very productive year, a great year. I should have asked staff what the total number of petitions we heard for the year was, but just looking back, we had five items in January, and we're ending the year with four items in December. So I sincerely hope that that's a good thing for the city of Elgin. As noted, we have four items on the petition, four petitions on the agenda tonight, I should say, and we'll hear more about each of these petitions coming up. But before we move into the agenda, I want to briefly discuss the role of this commission. We are a recommending body for city council. So the commission's role is to review these proposals and provide recommendations. Just as far as the procedure for tonight's petitions, we will look to city staff for their opening review of staff report, and then we, as a commission, take the opportunity to ask questions of staff. Following that, we'll invite the petitioner or petitioner teams to come on up to the lectern over here and tell us your thoughts. Anything that wasn't covered in the staff reports, or anything you'd like to add, that's your opportunity to let us know. And then again, as a commission, we'll take the opportunity to ask you questions. Following that, we will open the petitions up to public comment. So if there is anyone in the audience who'd like to comment on these petitions, that's your opportunity. Following that, we close the public hearing portion of these petitions. So it's important to remember, if you've got something to say, you've got a question to ask, this is your opportunity tonight. Following that, the petitions are typically scheduled for two dates for city council, assuming they move forward, and staff will have those dates for you. But again, we are the public hearing portion tonight, so it's important, speak your mind, please. That's why we're all here, to hear you and to know what you're thinking. So at this point in time, we can move forward for the agenda. Those of you who wish to speak tonight should stand and face the court reporter and take the oath. All right, we can move on to the first petition, which is for 63 Douglas, Unit 201, Petition 46-22.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Chairman Cox. This first petition before you tonight, and for the record, we do have proof of all required notice that was provided for this petition.
Thank you.
So this first petition before you is the application by Camila Perrin as applicant and Cumming Holdings LLC as the property owner, who are requesting a conditional use to establish a tattoo parlor at the property commonly referred to as 53 through 63 Douglas Avenue, and specifically in the Unit 201. So the subject property outlined here in yellow is located downtown. It is a 260-square-foot vacant Unit 201 on the second floor of the three-story McBride Building, again, located in downtown Elgin at the southeast corner of Grove, excuse me, of Douglas Avenue and Division Street. The three-story McBride Building is approximately 15,000 square feet, and includes Arabica Coffee Shop on the first floor, State Farm Insurance Office, and two other retailers also on the first floor. The second floor, the entire second floor, is vacant, and then on the third floor, there are several office users. The building occupies the majority of the property. Here are a couple or three images of the building. Pedestrian access to all ground-floor tenant spaces, and then to the staircases that lead up to the upper floors, and elevators as well, are all located off of the Douglas Avenue. The vehicular access to the property is located in the back of the building from Division Street, and essentially provides access to the refuse collection area behind the building. The property is in the downtown area, Zone CC1, Center City District, as are properties to the north, south, and east. To the north is the Center City Apartments, the four-story apartment building. To the east is a one-story, I should say, two-story, single-family building that is attached to the three-story office building that is currently home to the Highland Loft, the event space. To the south is the two-story building that is currently home to a law office, and then to the west, across Douglas Avenue, is the city-owned parking lot that is Zone CF Community Facility District. So here is the, on the left, is the building floor plan of the second floor, and then to the right is the floor plan of Unit 201. As mentioned, the applicant is looking to establish a tattoo parlor within the existing tenant space. There are no substantial changes proposed to the interior of the unit. The applicant will only install the code-required sink indicated here in two possible locations. The entrance space, the entrance room would be used as a reception area, and then the second room of the tenant space would be used as the procedure room. The applicant intends to set up three separate workstations for different tattoo artists. The applicant does not have any intention to provide any other services, such as body piercings or other body modifications. The facility would be open by appointment only between noon and 8:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday. The establishment will have to comply with all city requirements, as well as the requirements of the Illinois Public Health Department. As the property is located downtown, there are no parking requirements for any uses downtown, but this tenant and its customers and employees would have access to all public parking facilities downtown, including the city-owned parking lot across the street that has 179 parking spaces. As with any other conditional use, the proposal is required to meet the conditional use standards, the five standards. Our overview of those standards is provided in the packet. Staff recommends approval subject to the conditions outlined in the packet. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. Start on my left, Commissioner Jones, questions for staff.
No questions, thanks to me.
Commissioner Lopez?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Wildermouth?
No questions.
All right, I don't have any questions for you.
Thank you.
All right, at this point in time, we'll invite the petitioner to come on up. For all of you here tonight, when you come up, please state your name, spell it, give us your address, and then tell us your thoughts.
Hello, and I, first of all, wanted to thank you for having me today. It's been a year worth of work. My name is Camila Perrin. It is K-A-M-I-L-A-P-E-R-R-I-N, and I go by Laraya, as I've been introduced previously. I have moved to Elgin almost a year ago, and I've seen the city as a city of opportunity. I used to also live in Franklin Park in downtown Illinois. Apparently, I'm a suburban person, and I prefer a little bit more quiet of an environment. Currently, I worked at Top Notch Tattoo, which is on the Chicago Avenue, and it's a fantastic staff. However, I personally prefer to be, as a private person, to have my clients at their utmost comfort zone, providing them with, you know, full confidential environment, as well, for example, with convenience of adjusting the music loudness, et cetera. I prefer to actually work in a very calm zone. And I know that tattoo artistry is not looked upon this way. I, however, am a little bit more in a calmer zone. I'm a student, I used to be a student of architecture and art. I came to the States from Poland 15 years ago as a student, as a student exchange, and went to UIC to continue my education. Tattoo artistry, I know, has a very bad image, and I am here to actually prove difference. It's very artistic of a craft, and I think that every client has their own vision of how they want to be portrayed, from a little tiny mark on their body to full body art to remember something from their past, something that helps them to go through something through their life. Now to actually go to the important things, I would like to inquire and hope that you will consider my petition to be a part of the 63 Douglas Avenue building, the McBride Building, and I understand it's a historic place. However, the beauty of that was just, I could not pass through it. That's why I was hoping that it's something you would consider. And I wanted to also explain the reason of two different areas of the sinks. I did not want to push the procedure yet of mounting the sink because of potential denial. I did not want to jump over and, you know, go for it. However, it's very important to make sure that there is a sink in the facility, aside of the bathroom, to make sure that the Health Department of Illinois is going to do the licensing for the parlor. So on one side, there is a possibility to mount the sink inside of the procedure area, and one in the area that will be considered as a waiting room, so to say. It will be determined by a plumber, which will determine from which side will be an easier access. So it will be just one of those. And it's been already approved by the landlord that those are two very good possibilities as well. As far as the opening and closing hours is going to be tentatively from noon to eight, however, if, for example, a client needs more time, I will always make sure that I'm going to stay later. If they're running late, I'm going to wait for them as well. So this will be more between the client and myself. Also, at the very beginnings, and who knows, maybe till the end of my being here, it might be just me, I would like to potentially make sure that the offer stays open to have up to three tattoo artists. However, for now, it's going to be just my personal studio. So if something expands, then I would just like to have the assurance that it's possible to have up to three artists, or if there's any guest artists coming over to see Elgin, that'll be fantastic to be able to host them. Also, a majority of my clients are out of state. I don't know how it works, but social media is outstanding. That's why I feel like clients from different states will have more opportunity to leave their money also in Elgin, to dine and stay at the hotel. So it's a great opportunity to, you know, to show them the good side of our city. If there's any other questions I could answer, I'll be more than happy to.
All right, well, we appreciate that. I'll start with Commissioner Wildermouth, questions for the petitioner.
No questions.
Commissioner Lopez?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
Thank you. Your proposal was very impressive. I thought that I read in there, and I couldn't find it again. Were you looking in any other communities other than Elgin?
Yes, previously, because it was a nice process of trying to find a house earlier this year. So I was first supposed to be living in Roselle, in different areas. So in the meantime, I was trying to look different areas for sure. However, I've gotten in touch with Mrs. Jennifer Frikala, and so she was way too convincing, and I had to just move on with Elgin.
Yeah, I'm a fan of Top Notch, too. They do a good...
Oh, really? Yes, they're great people.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. My only question is actually for staff. As part of the testimony tonight, we heard that the hours may be blurred a little bit if there's a late arrival, which I understand why you would do that, but is there any consideration we need to take with regard to that?
No, not whatsoever. The hours are just for information purposes. The applicant is not tied to any hours, per se, because they're not in the conditions of the approval.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any questions for you, so appreciate you coming tonight.
Thank you.
All right, as promised, we will open this petition up to public comment. So I do have the sign-in sheets. There's no one on these, so we will look out to the audience. Starting over here, if there's anyone who wants to come on up, now's your opportunity. No? We'll move to the center section. Anyone? Seen head shakes? No? All right. We will close the public hearing portion of this petition then, and look to staff for any final comments.
Nothing further to add. Staff recommends approval subject to conditions in the packet.
Thank you. So at this point in time, then, the chair will entertain a motion for this petition, which is 46-22.
I move to recommend the city council approve Petition Number 4622, subject to the conditions outlined within our packet, and to adopt as the findings of the commission. Those findings also provided within our packet.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Staff, please call the roll.
Commissioner Wildermouth?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
And Chairman Cox?
Yes.
The motion is approved, four to zero.
All right, and as said, that will be our recommendation to city council, and continue working with staff going forward. All right, we'll take a moment to do the paperwork shuffle and reset here. We're going to be heading over to 725 West Chicago Street, Petition 45-22.
Okay, the second petition, and again, we do have proof of proper notice on this one as well.
Thank you, sir.
This one is the application by Susie Sarazin as applicant, and Rom Foods Store LLC as the property owner, who are requesting an amendment to the Conditional Use Ordinance Number G12-15, which granted a conditional use for accessory package liquor sales at an existing general merchandise store, to, one, eliminate the prohibition of street graphics advertising the sale of alcohol, and, two, eliminate the prohibition of selling single-unit bottles or cans of packaged beer. All of this at the property commonly known as 725 West Chicago Street. As usual, we'll start with the location of the property, again outlined in yellow. It is 10,000-square-foot lot located the southwest corner of West Chicago Street and Sheridan Street. It is on the near west side of Elgin. The property is improved with the approximately 1,300-square-foot building. It's a one-story commercial building that is home to Rom Foods General Store. The property also includes a small parking lot with seven parking stalls. As you can see, the properties to the north, east, and west have the same reddish color, which means they're all zoned the same. That is the NB Neighborhood Business District. To the north is the Oak Tree Plaza Shopping Center. To the west is a commercial property with two buildings and a small parking lot. One of those tenants is a glass contractor and retail store. And then to the east is the City of Elgin Fire Station Number Six. To the south are the single-family homes, which is Zone RC2, Residence Conservation District. Here are a couple photographs of the existing Rom Foods Store. So just to give you a little history on the property, so back in 2015, after several failed applications, the city ultimately granted a conditional use for accessory package liquor sales within the existing general food store, Rom Foods Store, by Ordinance G1215. That conditional use approval included several conditions. Two of those are, number one, that the street graphics advertising alcohol sales were prohibited, and the second condition was that the packaged beer in either bottles or cans shall not be sold as a single unit. So the applicant is here in front of you tonight, requesting approval of an amendment to that conditional use to eliminate those two conditions. This here is the floor plan of the existing store. On the top is the front door that faces essentially the north side of the building, that faces the parking lot. The cashier's counter is right here, and then the liquor area is to the left of the cashier. Both conditions were originally implemented to minimize any potential negative impact of alcohol sales on this property and the surrounding neighborhood. However, since then, and I think it was in 2016 or so, or maybe 2017, the Supreme Court, regarding the first condition, the Supreme Court made a ruling that municipalities across U.S. cannot regulate signage based on the content of signs. And this is exactly what this specific condition is. It allows Rom Foods to install commercial signage, but if that signage advertises sale of alcohol, then it's prohibited. So that is the definition of a regulation based on the content of the sign. The city has amended our sign ordinance to eliminate any one of these regulations and restrictions that could be interpreted as regulations based on the content. And so staff does recommend, and is in support of this request to eliminate this specific condition that would prohibit advertising any sale of alcohol on the property. The applicant has indicated that their plans are simply to install some window graphics that would advertise sale of alcohol on the property. However, if this condition is eliminated, they would be permitted to modify their wall sign, and then the freestanding sign of the property to put whatever message they want. Now regarding the second condition, staff is also in support of eliminating the second condition. The establishment received a liquor license subsequent to their zoning approval, and that liquor license allows them to sell both beer, wine, and liquor. And currently, they are allowed to sell single-serve packages of both wine and liquor. The only thing they cannot do is sell individual packages of beer in bottles or cans. Since this ordinance for conditional use was adopted, the city council has amended the liquor code in 2017 to specifically include this condition that prohibits sales of beers and other products, other liquor, in single-serve packages. They've amended the liquor code to include that condition on any establishment within the downtown area. And downtown was defined as Kimball Street on the north, Dundee and Villa Street on the east, National Street on the south, and then Route 31 State Street on the west, and includes properties on both sides of these boundary streets. And this subject property is located on the near west side of Elgin, so it's outside of the downtown area that the liquor code affects and this condition affects. There are also two other similar liquor stores within four or five blocks of this subject property of Rom Foods that have been in existence since, at least since the early 90s, and those two establishments, both on Walnut Avenue, one at 776 Walnut, which is Super Savor Foods and Liquor Store, and then the Neighborhood Food and Liquor, which is at 805 Walnut. Both of those establishments are allowed to sell alcohol, and they're allowed to sell individual, a single-serve package of beer, and there are no negative impacts of those establishments on the surrounding area. And in effect, this condition places Rom Foods at a disadvantage compared to the other similar liquor stores in the nearby neighborhoods. So for those reasons, staff does recommend approval of the elimination of those two conditions from their conditional use approval. As any other conditional use application, this one also has to satisfy standards for conditional use. We have provided our overview of the standards in the packet, and again, staff recommends approval subject to the conditions in the packet. With that, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I'll start with Commissioner Lopez, questions for staff.
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Wildermouth?
So just to confirm, if it was not approved, then we would be potentially, it could then be challenged by U.S. Supreme Court, since it's not currently in alignment with the legal precedent, then?
The first condition regarding the signage, yes.
Yeah.
Commissioner Jones?
No questions, thank you, Demi.
All right, I don't have any questions for you. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, at this point, we'll invite the petitioner team to come on up.
Welcome. Oh, thank you, thank you. My name is Lapoli Henderson, and I live at 6 South Union Street, Apartment 8A. I came to Elgin for the last three years, I've been here for the last three years. I am an administrative assistant at Vitality Dental Arts in Elgin. And, you know, after a hard day's work, you come home and you don't want to buy a 24K. You just want to smile something to calm down. Most people usually play video games. Some play, you know, I don't know, movies and things like that, but others want to just, you know, chill with just something to drink on the side to calm down from a very busy day. I am 36. I may look young, but however, my day is very, very stressful. And there are times when I just want to come passing the place to go home and relax, instead of actually going around the corner, down the street, to jewel down, you know, I want to support them. Another reason why I would like to support them is because the store in itself is beyond the liquor. Their hearts are amazing, their minds are amazing, and they really are a staple in the community. When I don't have money, you know, I live here alone, my family's in Florida, when I don't have money and I need food, or when I need this, or when I need that, they're there to help me. So I'm here to say, they're amazing. Just give it the opportunity. So thank you.
All right, appreciate your thoughts.
Yes, ma'am. It's L-E-P-O-L-I-O-N Henderson, H-E-N-D-E-R-S-O-N, junior. You're welcome.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions?
Nope.
Thank you.
So there may have been, maybe a little bit of confusion. We typically invite the petitioner to come up first. I appreciate the support here in the audience, and we're going to take that data and store it away for when we do the next part, but appreciate it. But again, it's really important that someone from the petitioner team comes on up, so. Or from the business, as I'm being nudged maybe to use a little more vernacular. Were you sworn in earlier, sir?
Said yeah.
Were you sworn in earlier?
Just one, no, earlier, no. I don't understand what you said.
Were you sworn in? Did you take the oath from the court reporter?
No, this is the first time.
Okay.
All right.
So let's go ahead and do that, then?
Just one, no, earlier, no. I don't understand what you said.
Were you sworn in? Did you take the oath from the court reporter?
No, this is the first time.
Okay.
All right.
So let's go ahead and do that, then?
Yes, 1033, yes. My name is Franklin Horace. So, we've been in the community, let's say, we've been there for a while, since 2009. So, when we applied for the liquor license, I think we tried like two, three times, it didn't work, and we still, there's little issue before we get the license, they were complaining that they're going to have problem with the neighborhood, they're saying that poverty value going to go down, you're going to find cane in the floor. We proved them, saying we started there, we never have this problem. That's what they thought. But the way we did it, I make sure, I control the parking lot. I make sure I don't see nobody hang out in the parking lot if you're not buying. All right? We make sure nobody going to come with the cane throwing in the parking lot. You can pass anytime, it's always clean. And we never have any issue with anybody. We know how to handle thing. Sometime people come frustrated, we have a way, we calm them down. They always want to come to my store, they love this store, they want to be there, they complaining almost every day. I need a single beer. I say, I don't sell single. They say, well, I'm going to have to go somewhere right now, so sometime they already start buying stuff, they just put them back. They say, I'm going to take everything in one shop, I can't go far away. And we always, they always complaining. So, having that, not too many people know if we sell beer and wine. They come and say, why, you're the only one in the neighborhood who cannot sell single beer? Why super server can sell? Why neighborhood liquor can sell? I say, no, that's what they gave me, I'm going to stay with you. I'm going to stay with it. But some even says that, well, if I need anything, so can I call the city? I say, you can call, do whatever. So I will make sure you got everything here. Well, sometime we start drinking, we need something, we don't want to drive, we don't want to fire away, we want something here in the neighborhood. You got everything except the single. Like he said, sometime we don't feel like buying 24. We need only one beer just to calm down. I said, it's not me, I'm going to try, I'm going to keep trying. So if you guys can do that for me, that would be great, because even the sign hurt me a lot. He said, how come you're the only one don't have a sign? I said, that's how they figure it out, there's nothing I cannot do. So I can still apply. They said, well, if you put, if you can put the sign, we know that you sell beer, when we come here, we can buy everything in one place. Well, if you guys can do that for them, that would be good for me and for them also. Thank you.
All right, just checking with the commissioner, Commissioner Jones, do you have any questions for this gentleman?
Yeah, thank you, and I just want to thank you for the community engagement, all these signatures that you got in support of the changes at your store. That really speaks volumes to what you're doing. I did have a couple questions. Do you sell, do you sell the little bottles of alcohol, too, in your store? Just out of curiosity, you know, like the airline bottles? Do you know, Fireball?
Yes, we get Fireball, we get Fireball, 375, where we get those, yes.
Okay.
Sorry, do you mean the single shots?
The single shots. Do you know what I'm talking about?
If we get them?
Yeah.
Yes, we do have them.
Okay, okay. And then just, well, more to the city, the single-use cans, having a building in downtown Elgin, I pick up three cans instead of one can. But it's not, who knows where it's coming from, but it doesn't address what you're getting at. But thank you for doing this all with the community, and your packet looks good.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Commissioner Lopez?
I have no questions. It's already moved away.
Commissioner Wilder Muth, any questions for this gentleman?
No questions.
All right, I don't have any questions for you, but I want to thank you for following the laws of the land in effect and taking this up through the proper procedures and bringing it for us tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, we do have the signage sheets, but again, there's no names on these, so for those of you who would like to speak on this petition, now is your opportunity to come on up. Seeing smiles and head nods, but no one's moving this way. And again, sir, I believe you need to be sworn in as well, correct?
No.
You did? Okay, all right, pile the jizz. Oh, all right.
My name is Sean Ayers, S-H-A-W-N-A-Y-E-R-S, 2024, Middleton Court, Elgin, 60124. Listening to all of it, I mean, obviously, the signage sort of has to be done, but for the single containers, I think that's actually a great idea for them. I've lived in Elgin for 10 years now, and I am a wrestling coach, I'm a veteran, I do a lot of stuff. One thing I don't keep in my house is alcohol and beer. So when I want one, I do exactly that. I'm notorious for going. I buy the nice bottle of Dragon's Milk, I go home, I have pizza with my family, and I limit what I keep in the house because I don't want to have a lot of stuff there for my kids to see, so they know every once in a while dad has a beer, and that's okay. So I think the single use is very important, especially given the map and the location. You can walk out, go grab one, go home, relax, have a beer, so I think it's absolutely important for their business, and if they're losing business because of it, I think it is just completely detrimental to not approve it. And it does more good for the community to keep that small business and that money in Elgin, because if you look at that facility, it's not something that's going to have a lot more use to other people, but for them, it's got a huge use, and for the community, it allows people to keep growing and staying here in our town. So, thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone else? Going once, going twice? All right, we will close the public hearing portion of this petition then, and look back to staff for any final comments.
Nothing further to add, just to clarify, you know, staff does support and recommends amending the previous conditional use ordinance, number G-1215, to eliminate those two conditions. One regarding the signage, and then the second one regarding the prohibition of single-serve packages of beer.
Okay, thank you. So the chair will entertain a motion for this petition, which is 45-22.
I move to recommend that the city council approve petition 45-22, subject to the conditions outlined within our packet, plus any additional conditions, if any, and to adopt the findings of the commission. Those findings also provided within our packet.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Staff, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilder Muth?
Yes.
And Chairman Cox?
Yes.
Motion is approved, 4 to 0.
All right, thanks for coming this evening. I see smiles in the back, so hopefully that's a good thing. Again, work with staff on the upcoming dates for this, to move forward to city council. All right, the next item, two items up are plan development, amendment, and conditional use. So both of them have two petition numbers, but we will consider them together. So that is 43-22 and 49-22 for 581 North McLean.
Okay, thank you, Chairman Cox. The next petition is the application by Watch City VFW Post 1307, as applicant, and Elgin Improvement LLC as the property owner, who are requesting approval and amendment to the PAB Plan Area Business District, ordinance G-1910, as amended, with departures from the Elgin Municipal Code regarding the requirements for the minimum number of required parking spaces on the property, and the conditional use for a membership organization and a commercial event space for activities pertaining to the assembly of people, all of which are necessary to establish a new facility for veterans of foreign wars. That's the VFW Post 1307, within an existing commercial tenant space at the property that's commonly known as 581 North McLean Boulevard. Again, we'll start with the area map showing the location of the subject property. So, the subject property is a 2,450-square-foot tenant space that is part of the Wing Park Shopping Center. The shopping center is located at the southeast corner of North McLean Boulevard and Wing Street. The entire shopping center includes six buildings and a total of approximately 62,000 square feet of floor area, and also 319 parking spaces. Some of the tenants within the shopping center include Walgreens within its own building on the north end, Big Apple Bagels, Little Caesar's Restaurants, and other retailers. Approximately 13,500 square feet of the existing shopping center is currently vacant. The properties to the north and south are Zone CF Community Facility District. To the north is the Illinois Park Elementary School across Wing Street. To the south, across Eagle Drive, is the Calvary Lutheran Church. And then to the west, across North McLean, are the AB Area Business Zone properties, which include several one- and two-story commercial buildings. And then to the east, the shopping center is bordered by the single-family homes that are zoned RC1. Here are a couple images of the shopping center and the specific subject tenant space. So VFW is looking to establish its next post location for the Post 1307. That will be within this vacant tenant space at 581 North McLean Boulevard. As I said, it's approximately 2,500 square feet in area. VFW provides a place for its members, the veterans, to come together, share camaraderie, find assistance for any type of need that they have, and then also find opportunities for community engagement and involvement. This is the proposed floor plan for the tenant space. They're looking to do substantial interior renovation of the space, but no exterior changes to the building or to the site. The applicant intends to install a new commercial kitchen, generally in the center of the space. See if this works. Okay, so this would be the new commercial kitchen, and then the front of the space, here's the front door towards the front parking lot. The front space would be set up as a normal restaurant with a bar, with counter seating, and just regular seating with the tables. The back of the space would be set up for meeting rooms, for meetings. It would include several round tables. The VFW has two monthly meetings, which occur on the first Monday of the month, and then on the first Wednesday of the month. The meetings are in the evening hours. However, the applicant intends to offer the facility for other types of events, such as birthday parties and other various types of celebrations. They also intend to apply for the full liquor license to be able to serve alcohol for on-premise consumption as part of their facility. They are also planning to apply for license to have gaming terminals. They're showing the two right here in this corner. They may be able to have more, depending on how many of these are available. The gaming terminals would be classified as accessory use to the facility, so they have to comply with certain requirements to be no more than 10% of the floor area, which these two are far less below. The proposed hours of operation for the post are generally from 1:00 p.m. to 1:00 a.m. Monday through Thursday, 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. the next day on Fridays and Saturdays, and then 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. the next day on Sundays. As I mentioned, they are not proposing any changes to the exterior of the building. Now, the establishment of the VFW requires an amendment to the existing plan development ordinance due to the parking requirement for the shopping center. You may recall, last year, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval, and ultimately, the city council approved an amendment to that plan development for that shopping center that would allow any permitted use to establish within the shopping center without the need to provide additional parking, essentially recognizing that there's limited space to add any parking on site, it's fully built out, and with any additional business that comes in, the parking requirement may be higher. So, in similar fashion, the establishment of this conditional use requires, you know, additional parking, and with the current tenant mix, and then with the VFW in this location, they would, the shopping center would be required to have 334 parking spaces on site, but only 319 existing spaces, obviously, they are short. So they're requesting a departure from that parking requirement with this additional amendment to the plan development. So we've asked the applicant to provide some information regarding the current occupancy of the parking spaces on site at various times during the week to demonstrate that there is adequate capacity within, you know, within the parking lot. So they provided some counts on a Monday night and Wednesday night, when the post would have its meetings, and then also on a Saturday midday that coincides with the busiest time for the shopping center. And indeed, the busiest time was on Saturday, when 102 parking spaces were occupied of the 319 stalls on site. That's only 32% occupied during the peak time for the shopping center. So that still allows, there's still 217 parking spaces available that would be then used by VFW and then future tenants of the shopping center. So they, that shows that there's adequate parking on site to meet the needs of the current proposed use and then other uses in the future. So the proposal is required to meet the standards for map amendments, plan developments, and also for conditional uses, and we've provided our overview of the standards in the packet, and staff recommends approval subject to the conditions in the packet. Of those, I'll just note that as they are requesting to be able to hold various types of events, similar to other commercial event spaces that we have throughout the city, but primarily downtown, our recommendation includes a number of those conditions that are usually associated with commercial event spaces regarding alcohol and noise, et cetera. So, with that, happy to answer any questions.
Do we have proof of proper notice for this one?
We do, thank you, yes.
All right. Commissioner Lopez, you're up.
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
No questions.
Commissioner Wilder Muth?
No questions.
All right, thank you. All right, as promised, and as we did in the last couple petitions, now's time for the petitioner team to come on up. With their prior military service, they're doing a flanking maneuver. All right, again, please state your name.
Sean Ayers, S-H-A-W-N-A-Y-E-R-S, and my address is 208 Middleton Court, Elgin, Illinois, 60124.
I'm Nicholas Harrington, excuse me, Nicholas Harrington, N-I-C-H-O-L-A-S-H-A-R-R-I-N-G-T-O-N, and I live at 3352 Blue Ridge in Carpentersville. So we're here today to reestablish the Elgin VFW. It used to be further west and on a frontage road, and just the maintenance and repairs of a freestanding building got more than the previous leadership could handle, so we had to sell the property. We're trying to reestablish it because our mission is veteran-serving veterans. Even though we've retired or just been honorably discharged, we're still serving, we're still wanting to be able to help veterans here in Elgin. We do a lot with the VAC of Kane County in order to help people get their benefits, make sure people are taken care of. The facility is where the VFW makes their money. It's how we help people. We've helped people keep their houses, we've helped, I was helped. The reason I became the commander is because State Commander Don Boyer, God rest him, paid to have my furnace fixed in the middle of the winter when I was laid off, because I do construction. He saw me post on Facebook just venting a little, took care of it, called the company, canceled my check, sent a check in. Only thing he asked me to do was get involved, so here I am. We're doing this so we can continue to help veterans, and I'm sorry, I get emotional about this, guys, so I apologize ahead of time. People don't understand the VFW, they see it as an old man, old boys, good old boys club, and it's not. I suffer from PTSD, anxiety, and I have anger issues because of that. I once told a psych doc that, well, I'm like the Hulk. I'm angry all the time, I just don't get big and green. When I can go in there, I can talk to my brothers and my sisters, and I can explain to them, and they know, because they've been there, they've seen the same things I've seen, and it's easier for us to understand each other. And when I do lash out at one of them, they're forgiving and understanding because they know. It gives us a safe space to feel at home. But it allows us to take care of our older veterans. We have a lot of Vietnam veterans right now that we are able to keep track of, and we know if they're sick and they have needs, we can attend to that. If somebody passes away, we can be there. Joyce Simmons and her husband, who he is still currently serving, are members of the Joyce Simmons and her husband, who he is still currently serving, are members of our VFW, and I have served as a pallbearer for unclaimed soldiers. I have, you know, taken my high school wrestling team in there to represent, to honor them, and this is what we do. We understand there are certain concerns and issues in the neighborhood as far as, you know, alcohol on-site, us doing events. We want to host bridal showers, baby showers, birthday parties, things that there aren't really many facilities for. We want to be a part of the neighborhood, and that's why Vet Area is key. We understand it's near a neighborhood, near a school, but we're a private organization where the only way you can come in is if you're invited by us and vouched for by us. And that's something that people don't realize. They just think it's another bar coming to town. But there are very specific in our bylaws limitations that don't allow it to just be another pub where some drunken kid's going to go wandering down the street and do something stupid. And this is something that's very important to us because I know the hours of operations, those I wanted to touch on because they are sort of in flux. They're very set for a reason. We will more than likely not be open as late as we're asking for, but we want it because on Friday nights, I play ice hockey at Canlin Ice Arena in West Dundee. Well, instead of giving money to just some random bar, we would like to be able to sponsor teams that come to us, people I know, other veterans that play there, so that way we can continue to help the community that way. So there are certain nights that the hours are important, such as Friday night, which is when our leagues are. But the rest of the nights, we may not be open that late at all. There might be nights we have nobody in there and we shut down at nine o'clock. So it's not going to be a constant party. It's not going to be something that's going to be a concern. But this is how we go about raising money. Many people know about the McHenry Post, where they do Queen of Hearts, and have had jackpots of millions. And that's what we hope for because part of that money does come back to the community. And this is our way of giving back to just Elgin as a whole, but as well as being able to take care of our veterans and still serve them.
Thank you again for listening to us. I was born and raised in Elgin. When I came back from service, I moved to, I was in Hoffman, Dundee, South Elgin, back to Elgin. Now I'm in Carpentersville, but I've stayed with this post since about three months after I came home from my deployments. Elgin has a very, very special place in my heart, and I want to help the veterans of this community. When we had to close our post, our previous facility, there has been a huge decline of membership, and people don't seem to realize that we are still around. And I see so many people that could use our help in this community. Like what Sean was saying, that, you know, people look at it as just another bar or an old man's home. We're here to tell you, I don't think we're very old, and we're very involved in this organization. We need to bring the younger members in and help them. As you know, veterans have had a very difficult time coming back from this war, or these wars. And we need to be able to be present in the community, and we have seen that by not having a facility, we have not been present in this community, and we want to change that. Thank you.
All right, I appreciate that. I'll start on my left, Commissioner Jones. Any questions for these gentlemen?
No questions. Thank you for your service and thanks for what you do here in the community.
Thank you, ma'am.
Commissioner Lopez?
No questions. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Wilmuth?
You kind of touched on it a little bit, but just talking about the absence of a brick and mortar, could you just maybe just speak about the necessity? You kind of touched on it a little bit, but the necessity for that actual physical location to have and what not having that has meant for the community?
Well, what it has meant for the community is we can't put public knowledge out there. I happen to be friends with the gentleman who actually runs a program for veterans for outdoor work, and he takes them out fishing and everything, and he's great. Well, we can't bring him out and let him have his boat out there and show off what we do. We can't be present because as a veteran, if you don't know there's a VFW, when you come home, you're lost. You don't know who to turn to. Nobody wants to go to the VA. Everybody's like, oh, great, that means I'm broken. None of us want to admit how broken we really are. When you can go and sit down next to somebody who understands exactly what you're going through, that builds that community. Veteran suicide is twenty-two a day. I would love to see that drop. We are a part of that. We send people to Congress every year to fight for things for us. And because we don't have a brick and mortar facility, they don't know where to go. Most people don't know where to find the VAC because, yeah, it's in Kane County, but we're in Kane County. Most people don't know that. We have a VAC representative who is on our officer staff at the VFW. We work closely, hand in hand, with Jake Zimmerman in order to get them benefits, get them counseling, get them what they need. So by us not having a brick and mortar facility for them to turn to, they never get to talk to us. I don't have my phone number on a billboard where they can just call me, but if I have a VFW sign, they can walk in. That's the difference between being present for us and not being present.
Thanks for your passion and for your service.
Thank you, sir.
All right, I don't have any questions for you. I can just tell you that I think there's at least three veterans in the group here besides you two tonight, so we appreciate your service as well.
Thanks, sir.
So you have support behind this petition.
And ex-russlers.
So any other comments from the commission? If not, we will move forward to the public hearing portion of this petition. I do have the sign-in sheet, but there's no one signed in. So again, we'll just take a sweep across the audience here. Anyone who wants to speak, please come on up. All right, people are actively dodging my gaze at this point in time. So we will close the public hearing portion of this petition and look to staff for final comments.
Nothing further to add. Again, staff recommends approval subject to the conditions in the packet.
All right, thank you. So at this point in time, then, the chair will entertain a motion for these petitions, which is forty-three dash twenty-two and forty-nine dash twenty-two.
I move to recommend that city council approve petitions number forty-three dash twenty-two and forty-nine dash twenty-two, subject to the conditions outlined within the staff report and to adopt as the findings of the commission, the documents and conditions provided within such staff report.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Lopez by news. All right, staff, please call a roll.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilmuth?
Yes.
And Chairman Cox?
Yes.
The motion is approved, four to zero.
All right, thank you for coming this evening. And again, as we said before to the other previous petitions, work with staff for the future city council dates. All right, for the next item on the agenda, my fellow commissioners may have noticed my architecture firm provided a document for the city and for the petitioner, which was an exhibit for their use in their petition. So I will need to recuse myself from this petition. So at this point in time, I'd like the commission to appoint a chairperson pro temp.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Commissioner Lopez as chairman pro temp.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Staff, please call the roll.
Commissioner Wilmuth?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Epstein.
And Chairman Cox?
Epstein.
Motion is approved, two to zero.
Barely, huh? At this point, I'd like to present the next petition, forty-four dash twenty-two and fifty dash twenty-two. I'd like the staff, you can confirm the proof required, of required notice has been provided?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, we do have proof of proper notice. All right. And with that, I will start tonight before you. We have petitions forty-four dash twenty-two and fifty dash twenty-two. Ian Nathan as applicant and Spartan Elgin LLC as property owner are requesting approval of an amendment to a PNB Plain Neighborhood Business District, ordinance number G ten to one dash ninety-eight, as previously amended by ordinance number G thirty-five dash thirteen with departures from the Elgin Municipal Code for the minimum number of required parking spaces and a conditional use to permit an amusement and recreational services not else classified, more specifically, an indoor skate park and a commercial event space for activities pertaining to the assembly of people, all of which at the property commonly referred to as eight twenty South McLean Boulevard. Move on to our next slide, so I'll give you some property background information. The subject property is part of the four-point-five-acre McLean Plaza Shopping Center. The shopping center consists of about forty-four thousand square-foot multi-tenant building located on the west side of South McLean Boulevard, between College Green Drive to the north, try and find my pointer there, and Torrey Pine Drive to the south. Right down here, here's McLean Boulevard. The existing building tenants includes Emily's Mexican Grill Restaurant, Bungies, Tysh, and Automotive Vehicle Service Repair Shop, and Illinois Spine and Desk Medical Offices, and Higher Up Solutions, which is an employment agency. The property was annexed into the city in nineteen seventy. Upon annexation, it was Zoned B1 Retail Businesses. In nineteen ninety-two, it was rezoned to PNB Plain Neighborhood Business District as part of the comprehensive amendment to the municipal, to the zoning code. The existing building was constructed in nineteen ninety-eight, and over the years, several conditional uses have been granted. In two thousand and two, a conditional use was granted for a liquor store. In two thousand and eighteen, another conditional use for self-defense training school. And most recently, before you, Emily's Restaurant was approved, was here before you for a conditional use to be able to serve wine and beer to their clients. The property to the north, across College Green Drive, right here, is also Zoned PNB Plain Neighborhood Business District, and it's improved with two multi-tenant, one-story commercial buildings. The property to the south, across Torrey Pine Drive, is Zoned NB Neighborhood Business, and it is improved with a one-story commercial building, home to Marinetti's Wine and Liquor Store, a tobacco shop, and a boxing studio. And the properties to the east, across the street, McLean, across McLean Boulevard is Zoned ORI, and it is improved for several mobile homes. And then the property is right here, to the west, a Zoned RC1, and it's improved for single-family residents, which is part of the College Green subdivision. Here's the proposed site plan. So the proposed indoor skate park facility would occupy about an existing thirteen thousand five hundred square feet of vacant commercial space. It would have a small retail component selling t-shirts, shoes, hats, bags, and other similar retail items. The hours of operation would be from twelve PM to ten PM, Monday through Sunday. There will be a daily entrance fee. The applicant is proposing minor interior renovations, such as bathroom upgrades and also to create office space. Towards the front here. The skate park will also have some vending machines, offering water, drinks, and snacks for sale. The facility will also hold special events, such as birthday parties, skate competitions, fundraisers, et cetera. Here are some pictures of the front elevation of the tenant space. And here's a picture of what the interior currently looks like. The applicant is proposing no exterior changes to the building or the site. There would be no seating area for observation, and any new signage will have to meet the zoning ordinance requirements. Here are several pictures of examples that were submitted by the applicant of the proposed ramps and platforms for the skating, which will be designed as modular components, which can be moved throughout the skate park as needed. So next, what we have before you is that a proposed skate park is required to provide one parking space for every fourth person, plus one parking space per employee. So with a total occupancy load of two hundred and forty-nine persons and five employees during the busiest time, the facility is required to have sixty-seven parking spaces. So with the proposed skate park and the existing mix of tenants, the shopping center is required to have a total of a hundred and ninety-seven parking spaces. With sixty-seven parking spaces on-site, the shopping center does not meet the parking requirement. So therefore, the applicant is requesting an approval of a departure from the required parking to allow the establishment of the proposed use without the need to provide additional parking. With the property being already fully developed, there is no room to construct or stripe additional parking spaces on-site. The actual parking demand of the tenants in the shopping center is far less than what the zoning ordinance is requiring. Staff went out and counted parking demand on a normal weekday afternoon and found that existing tenants, which were all open at that time, only generated a demand for about thirty-six spaces of the hundred and sixty-seven parking stalls. So that was about a twenty-two percent demand. The proposed skate park is expected to have its busiest time on weekends, when most of the other tenants are closed. And therefore, the staff feels that a shopping center would have adequate parking to meet the need of all of the existing tenants and any future businesses. Staff had to test the application against the standard for a map amendment, plan development, and a conditional use. And staff feel if the departure from the parking requirement is approved, it would allow the proposed skate park to be established, and it would allow any future permitted uses to be established without the need to provide additional parking. And that proposal would save about ninety to sixty days of zoning application review process for the next business that would wish to move into the shopping center. Here are the, just going through the standards for a map amendment, standards for plan development, and then also the standards for the conditional use. And with that, staff is recommending approval of petitions forty-four dash twenty-two and fifty dash twenty-two, subject to the conditions that was outlined in our staff report. And in this time, I'll take questions from the commission.
Thank you very mu- thank you very much. I'll start off to my left, Commissioner Jones. Any questions?
No questions. Thanks, Denise.
Chairman Cox? Commissioner Wilmuth?
No questions.
I have no questions. Thank you. At this time, I'd like for the applicant's representative to come on up, introduce yourself and your team, and if you have spent a couple minutes providing a review of your application.
The rest of your team, thank you.
My name's Ian Nathan. This is my son and business partner. His name is Ian Nathan as well. Address, eight twenty South McLean Boulevard in Elgin. We intend to open up an indoor skate park. We know there's a huge demand and a need, so we are here to request your permission to open this up in your city and bring a lot of community and diversity and creativity to a city that looks like it already has a lot of it. So we think we'll be a good fit here.
Stephen Drews, S-T-E-V-E-N-D-R-E-W-S, with Coboo Architecture Studio, one eleven North Avenue, Barrington, Illinois. We were hired by the client to conduct a analysis of the building and have determined that we needed to add an additional bathroom as far as the services go for the occupancy load, and have determined that everything else meets the general requirement. So from that point, we're looking to get approval.
Questions?
Yeah, is there anything I can answer? My son can answer for you guys.
Do you need to speak at all, or?
I'd just like to say that I've been scanning on and off my entire life. I grew up in this area, went to South Elgin High School, and I know that there's a huge demand for a skate park in this area. The closest one is about an hour away, and I think that, especially in times like now... The closest one is about an hour away, and I think that, especially in times like now when it's cold outside and it gets dark earlier, we can really bring a lot of kids' creativity to the area, you know, just to provide for them and stuff like that, so, thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to ask, I'll start on my right here, Commissioner Wildermuth. Any questions?
No questions.
Commissioner Jones?
Just a comment. I love it when they're reusing these buildings that have been sitting empty for new and creative uses, so I hope that it's very successful for you. I recently, the Emilies, I think, will benefit from that, that whole little area with the gun range and all those things with having some additions out there would be great, so I hope it works out well.
Absolutely. Sorry, I'm a little nervous. I don't usually stand up and talk in front of people.
No worries.
But we specifically look for buildings that are abandoned or vacant for a number of time. We really enjoy being creative, and this specific unit is a unique setup, so it's perfect for what we're trying to use it for. I encourage you guys, if we get approved, to come and visit, because anything that I say won't do any justice to what it looks like. It's very unique, very creative, and we have extremely talented people that work with us to create a really cool, unique, and inspiring atmosphere.
Thank you.
We have no other questions. I'd like to open up the meeting for a public comment. For those individuals, I don't have anybody that signed ahead of time for interested parties or any other persons. So is there anybody out in the gallery that would like to add public comments? Go on once. Okay, so.
Hi, my name, my name is.
You have one, oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see you.
Sorry.
My fault. I'm looking down, working.
That's okay. That's right. My name is Leplion, L-E-P-O-L-I-O-N, Henderson, H-E-N-D-E-R-S-O-N, Jr., and I love skating. This, the store that I just spoke for a few moments ago, the Chicago Avenue, I bought like $400 skates, and I would go down Chicago Avenue because of the hills and the streets, but it's a busy street. Luckily, I know how to skate very well. But this would be amazing because I do travel far out in order to go to a skate park on weekends, so this would be great, like, please, please, please. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anybody else? I'm glad to see smiling faces. It's okay. At this point, I'd like to add, ask staff for any closing comments.
Yeah. Community Development is recommending approval of this petition, subject to the conditions as outlined in our packet, and we'd like to say, just stress that one of the conditions are that the event would be able to have, that the location will be able to have those events, like birthday parties, skating competitions, et cetera.
Thank you very much. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve or deny, deny the case.
I move to recommend the City Council approve petition numbers 44-22 and 50-22, subject to the conditions outlined within our packet, and to adopt as the findings of the commission, those findings also provided within our packet.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? No? Okay. Staff, please, roll call, please.
Commissioner Wildermuth?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Cox?
Epstein.
And Chairman Pro Tem Lopez?
Yes.
The motion is approved, three to zero with one abstention.
Thank you. At this point, I'd like to hand over the chair back to Chairman Cox.
Well, the job very well done, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, again, we appreciate everyone being here tonight. We have a couple items left. First is other business, which would be, anyone on the commission have any items for Commissioner Jones?
I've been on the commission for a couple years. I don't think we've ever had every petitioner stay and be cheerleaders for all the petitions on the agenda in any meeting I've ever attended, so thank you all for being here tonight.
I noticed that. Probably wouldn't have said something, but I'm thankful you did. That's good. Just to be fair, Commissioner Lopez?
Well, Commissioner Jones stole my thunder, but I also was going to say that, so thank you so much for being a part of the community and sticking around.
Commissioner Wildermuth? Got to give you a last swing.
No, I thank you. I'm just, tonight was really just, thanks for all the great petitions tonight, just the diversity of coming to Elgin, so thank you all for choosing Elgin for your businesses.
All right. Contrary to the usual, I have nothing to say. So we'll move on to item H, public comment. For those of you who are here this evening, if you would like to comment on anything that's not related to a petition, now is your opportunity. Anything about the proceedings tonight, anything else?
Thank you.
Appreciate the support. That's our goal, because we're volunteers, right? So we appreciate that. All right, closing then, the public hearing, or public comment portion of this meeting. We'll look to staff for the summary of pending development applications.
Let's see. So the city council meeting this week, the Cannabis Craft Grower that's proposed at 495 Sheridan in the Light Industrial Park, not too far from the, from the South McLean location of the skate park. That is on the city council agenda this week for consideration. And then, just a reminder that the first meeting in January is on the second Monday of January due to the holiday. I think, believe that's January 9th, and I think that's it. I'm happy to answer any questions about any of the items that are on the development review schedule.
I can corroborate, that is January 9th.
Thank you.
If there's no comments or questions, we can move on to the last item on our agenda, which is adjournment. Is there a motion, a second?
Motion adjourn.
I'll second you.
Commissioner Lopez, Commissioner Jones, staff, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Wildermuth?
Yes.
And Chairman Cox?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Have a happy Christmas and New Year season.
Thank you. Again, yes, happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Thank you.